Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this September 23, 2019 City Council meeting, beginning with a public forum. And it looks like we're going to have an exciting night. We have all kinds of people dressed in all kinds of colors. So thank you all very much for showing up. That's the good news. And the bad news is that I'm going to have to reduce the time because there are, let's see how many I've got, because there are 44 speakers. So I'm going to reduce that down to two minutes. I apologize to those of you who have sort of set performances. I know it's tricky to abbreviate those, but it helps. And so let me just review the formal notice around the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of two minutes. And just a special note is that we have the warm-up seat. So I will read two names. The second, the first name is the speaker, the second name is the next speaker, and that person can sit in the chair. So we move as effectively as possible through the round of speakers. So thank you all again for coming. We begin with Arlo Rollan and Laura Allen, and they will be followed by
Hello, everyone. Thank you for all listening to my comment. My name is Arlo Rollan. I'm in third grade this year. I want to have a good future. I don't want people to be losing their homes from climate change. I don't want extreme weather and forest fires wiping out whole towns. I want the city council to do everything in your power to have the Climate Action Plan succeed and more. Please invest in my future and the future of all the children in Eugene. Thank you.
Please just signal your support. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Laura Allen, and I'm Arlo's mother. And I'm also a member of Sustainability Commission. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about a resolution in support of the week-long climate strike which began last Friday. The councilors are going to have copies of this resolution, and we also have more that Ralph is bringing. Since the full resolution is too long to read, I would like to read a few key sections from it. Whereas marginalized populations in Eugene, Oregon, and worldwide, including people of color, immigrants, indigenous communities, low-income individuals, people with disabilities, and the unhoused, are already disproportionately affected by climate change and will continue to bear an excess burden as temperatures increase, oceans rise, and disasters worsen. And whereas people around the world have a fundamental human right to clean, healthy, and adequate air, water, land, food, education, health care, and shelter. And whereas Eugene, Oregon, is the home of a major research university and a trailblazing municipality by enacting our climate recovery ordinance into city policy, can hereby support this local youth-led climate emergency mobilization, as endorsed by numerous local environmental and civic groups, including Sunrise Movement, Eugene, 350 Eugene, Extinction Rebellion, and others. Therefore, be it resolved, the Sustainability Commission of the City of Eugene declares this resolution of support for the citywide emergency climate strike from September 20th to September 27th, 2019. And also, the Sustainability Commission, as a trusted advisor to city council, urges the council to declare support for these actions towards restoration of a safe and sustainable climate. This resolution passed unanimously on the September 18th monthly general meeting of the Eugene Sustainability Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ralph McDonald, followed by Jane Kwiatkowski.
Thank you, Arlo and Laura. Good evening, councilors, mayor, and visitors. Ralph McDonald from Betty Taylor's Ward 2, also speaking tonight for the Eugene Sustainability Commission in urging your support for the local youth-led climate strike. You have a copy of the full resolution at your desk tonight. It was supposed to be also in your packet last week. I won't talk about the climate crisis. I think you know about it at some level, although if you are like me, you try not to think about it when going about what is called business as usual. Gietta Tunberry, a 16-year-old Swede, I'm still learning to pronounce her name, began her, I think you are too, probably, you will hear about her if you haven't already, began her solo climate strike a year ago. She sat outside of the Swedish government on Fridays for a year. Last Friday, millions worldwide joined her. She told she's inspiring. She declined the flattery, telling Congress this week, "I don't want you to feel hopeful. I want you to feel panic. And also, we are running out of excuses, and we are running out of time." Degrressing a little bit, on May 20, 2019, council passed Resolution 5265, brought by Jerry Rosenmeyer through Council Greg Evans. That was great. That's a resolution in support of our children's trust. But a year earlier, in June of 2018, the Sustainability Commission forwarded to you a resolution very similar of support for our children's trust. We asked council for prompt consideration. That resolution and our follow-up got buried. I thank you for tonight's youth-led climate support and hope it won't be left in limbo for another year. And I thank you for moving forward on a groundbreaking Northwest Natural Franchise Agreement worked out by the commission and directing our city lobby at the state to help defeat the Jordan Cove project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Kwiatkowski, followed by Todd Boyle.
My name is Jane Kwiatkowski. I'm from South Eugene. I think that is in number two. At any rate, I also came to speak about climate change and the Eugene Climate and Energy Action Plan. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Of course, we can't wait any longer for federal or state-level action. We need to start here locally. And I think one of the most important needs is for citizens to have some way to take concrete actions as individuals and groups to help stop climate change. We need this immediately and continuing. One way to do this would be to have a well-organized organizing center and brainstorming hub, both virtual and brick-and-mortar, where citizens can offer their skills, ideas, labor, materials, money, and get volunteer opportunities to help with inspection of community climate actions. We also need to keep up a broad-based effort to educate the public. In order to get that ball rolling with brainstorming hub, I've got a number of ideas. I'll skip the obvious ones and move to some less obvious ones, one of which I noticed in the plan, there's the discussion of creating 20-minute neighborhoods of walkable neighborhoods with essential services. And I think one thing that may be helpful is to consider creating a new type of zoning, essential service residential, which would permit the building of small clinics, grocery stores, small bank satellites, postal substations, and so on, but would deny big-box stores, hotels, bars, and so on. The other one that I'm going to point out is the banning of non-compostable plastic bags everywhere, and especially for public service or large public events.
Thank you. Thank you. Todd Boyle, followed by Otis Root.
Todd Boyle. I'm in Allen's Alinkas Ward. I was going to bring a picture of Ann Montero, but it really would have been insensitive, just the latest homeless person to die in the streets. And the city council really should act on this. It is a conveyor belt of homelessness. It's producing more and more homeless and displaced people. 36,000 people living in Eugene, our neighbors, living on less than $1,000 a month, are completely out of the market. They can afford $300 a month. The 2018 statistics will be out this week, and I hope the city manager will have his staff right on that and update all their statistics on the same day. Because it's online, just get in there and update your statistics on the rents and these demographics here in the city. How can you improve the housing situation? You have to recognize these people are out of the market, and they are going to need a rescue package. And you're never going to be able to afford subsidized public housing for 36,000 people. It has got to be mostly private sector. It has to be, it has to cost $50,000 per unit, more or less. This is just simple logic. $50,000 is $300 a month for the rent or the mortgage, $300 or $400 a month. And there are many, many ideas, of which 80 were identified in the housing tools and strategies. And I've submitted a list several times to the Planning Commission. And so here's the three elements. It has to be new construction at $50,000. Okay, 100 or whatever, but it has to be really cheap, and nobody's producing it. Their supply is disappearing. It has to be new supply, and it has to be thousands of units. And it has to be reserved for those people who are low income. It has to be reserved for them so that middle and higher-income people can't just go in there and occupy it. And it has to be rent-capped. So you need all three of those components. And then it's like they say in New Jersey, bada-bada-boom, you got it done. Okay? Let's do it.
Thank you. Otis Root. Please remember that it's quiet. You can wiggle your fingers. All right. Otis Root, followed by Frederick Pitts.
Otis Root, Ward 1. I'd like you to hear this. I think it needs to be heard.
The thing that got me the most is on Saturday, I saw Eric, who works for Friends of Trees and is such a kind, sweet, hard-working person. So I went over to say, hey, how is this affecting you? And this is what turned me. You all know I came into this as a very serious homeless advocate and an experienced activist who has participated in these sorts of protests. When you make my nonprofit workers, who just a thread keeps them going, not be able to hold the tears in their eyes, I have a new feeling. I am very frustrated and upset. This has become the face of homelessness, which has hurt every single homeless person in this city. It's making people angrier, both the merchants and nonprofits there, but everyone who drives by. I believe in protest, and I believe this has become terrorism. You can tell how very, very upset I am. Some time ago, I was promoting the Jones and Roth Building across from the Big Liquor Store as a potential navigation center, day center, shelter, SRO. The possibilities are huge. Don, manager, became interested.
The term terrorist offends me. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Pitts, followed by Lauren Bailey.
My name is Frederick Pitts, and I'm in one of the little landlocked pieces of property out on River Road that's in the county, but surrounded by city. And I'm with a, I'm with an organization we just started called Micro dwellers, where people who are interested in living in a smaller footprint, smaller place, and we'd like to see that become more legal in the zoning ordinances. And I won't take much of your time. Basically, we would like to see more relaxation of the ADU zoning ordinances and things like SROs and other kinds of multifamily dwellings, so we can solve some of this homeless problem that we see growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Bailey, followed by Victor Odlavec.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Milton Bailey, and I reside on 24th Avenue in Eugene in Ward 1. In August, I came across a group of utility people standing around my property. And when I questioned them, I found out that they were going to be putting a replacement pole on the utility easement on my property with the intention of installing a 4G cell tower at the top as part of the 5G network. This pole itself is just 20 feet from my deck. The city approved the permit for the AT&amp;T 4G tower on 10/10/2018, just two years after approving the permit for my deck to be built. That 4G tower will stand, actually loom, 30 feet over our roof, beneath which is our home and my office, where I see clients every day for health care. What was supposed to have been our beautiful home that we just remodeled will now become a sinkhole of health issues impacting us on every level, every day, all day. I want you to stop this installation. I want you to revoke this permit. Installation has been delayed because of my own relentless efforts, not because anyone at the city, who I have implored over and over, has protected my home. I want it stopped. If you haven't read any of the studies that have been produced in regard to the health risks of this 4 and 5G technology, you are at fault. You can find many at thepubmed.gov. You can also easily find testimony and outcry of global medical organizations, and it's your responsibility to deeply research this, especially in view of your October 9th workday. Amendment 4 of the Constitution states the right of the people to be secure against unreasonable searches and seizures. You must realize that the data collection inherent in the 5G system is a seizure of personal property without permission or warrant. If you don't know or understand this, do some research. One of the primary purposes of this system is to collect data and sell it. Amendment 9 states that no state shall abridge the privileges or amenities of citizens of the United States, or deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. You have denied me protection under the law.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have less than a minute left. You've denied me, you have denied me the right to receive notice of your intent to allow others to destroy my home in the name of profit. And you've denied me the right to protest the installation of a dangerous piece of equipment so close to my living space, it promises to drive me from my home. So I'm going to challenge you with this. You stood up to the federal government when you declared Eugene a sanctuary city. And yet, you would befoul my sanctuary without notice, without my permission, without any care for the health of my family. In fact, you didn't stand up to the government when it came to endangering the health of your entire community.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
So Victor, I'm understanding you're giving up a minute of your time for her.
That's right. So if you can all see my shirt, it says Fiber Optic, the future, hardwired, fiber optic, and stop 5G. And so that's what we can pass right now. And I don't have time to read all of these 10 pages, but I'm going to hand it to you that I outlined. It is a report prepared by Grant Wilson from erflaw.org, and it's adopted for the city of Eugene, Oregon. The most important thing, they say, is the city of Eugene should establish a standing committee for telecommunications, and it should review whether any new telecommunications of 4G, 5G is even necessary. Fairfax, California, has an ad hoc committee to study the possibility of a fiber optic cable network instead of a 5G network. So you just do the fiber optic all the way to the buildings. And I'll hand this to you, and thank you.
Fine. Thank you. Sandy Sanders, followed by the Raging Grannies.
So I realize you guys are having a working session on 5G. And I've been here before talking to you folks. And I want to emphasize the fact that you and government across this country are being used by the commerce industry and big telecom to make profit out of us, victims of a technology that's not needed whatsoever. Is it purposeful in any way? And the whole thing, I was looking online, and I happened to run into this site called GetLams.com. And the industry wants to say that it's safe, that 5G and RF is perfectly fine for human beings. They've told the FCC, and they've conned them into it. They have studies they make up themselves. They don't look back to the 1920s, the 1940s, and the Navy. They've made substantial studies that find RF deadly. They know it. They use it for a weapon in the military. And so this site makes Faraday cage underwear for the techies. This is a high-slick site with incredible money behind it. It also says that they get recommendations from Mashable, Forbes, GQ, Men's Health, The Verge, CNBC. And these are radiation-protective garments. Where do we go from here? Do we have to accept something that actually we have to wear protection for? Or should we be protected by you in the first place against this being deployed on us? It's being rejected around the world very slowly, but media is totally pumping this stuff out. It's pumped by capitalism, has complete control of our government, all the processes. Since 1980, it decayed to the point where we don't have any kind of democratic representation at all anymore. We need to stop this now. You need to get yourself together and think about what is going on in society. What are we going to go to? Are we going to go to the new mesh fashion of Monty Python? Everyone will have chain mail wearing every day?
Thank you.
I mean, it's crazy.
Thank you. Raging Grannies, and they'll be followed by Nick Dykis.
They move slowly. We're the Raging Grannies, and we come from all portions of Lane County.
This land is your land. This land is my land.
Wait, stop! This is an emergency. This is a climate emergency. When I was young, so much younger today, I thought the earth could handle anything that came her way. But now, the carbon level's 415. We need a binding plan of action for Eugene.
Help us face the crisis we have now. Help us make a plan to slow it down. Help reduce emissions in our town. We must take action now.
Because the climate's changed in oh-so-many ways, humans are causing it. There's no need for debate. We must make changes to reduce our CO2. Eugene can make a plan, and it's up to you.
Help us face the crisis we have now. Help us make a plan to slow it down. Help reduce emissions in our town. We must take action now. We must take action now. We must take action now.
Thank you. Nick Dykis, followed by Mary McClellan.
Hi, my name is Nick Dykis. I'm 33 years old. I live in Ward 4.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Jesse Hubie. I'm not sure where I live, but I live in, like, by the fairgrounds, so, yeah.
I'm 29, and I live in Ward 2.
I'm Annika. I'm 21, and I'm not sure what ward I live in.
Ryan Moore, I live in Ward 8.
Chloe Morales, Ward 2.
350 Eugene declares the current state of the global greenhouse gas emissions, along with a lack of sufficient action worldwide, to have reached a climate emergency. Addressing the climate emergency requires a very rapid transition to carbon-free sources of energy from current fossil fuel use. With no comprehensive State of Oregon plan in place for greenhouse gas emission reductions, it is imperative that individual Oregon cities define their own targets for carbon reduction in support of the International Panel on Climate Change 2018 report, calling for limiting warming to below 1.5 degrees Celsius. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions rapidly enough requires...
Meeting all energy needs, including transportation, heating and cooling, and electricity with 100% renewable energy, not to include nuclear power generation by 2050.
100% renewable electricity sourced and supplied by local electric utilities by 2030. For resiliency reasons, electricity sources should emphasize in-jurisdiction energy generation.
Thank you. Thank you. You can submit the rest of it in writing. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary McClellan.
Oh, Mary McClellan, yes, you're next up. Thank you.
My name is Mary McClellan.
Followed by Amanda Dellinger. Got you.
And I live in Ward 2, and I am giving my time to the other people that are supposed to speak with the climate.
50% reduction in CO2 emissions produced by natural gas used by 2030 and 100% by 2050.
And also 50% reduction in CO2 emissions produced by all transportation by 2030 and 100% reduction by 2050.
Net-zero carbon emissions by 2050. Any remaining carbon emissions that cannot be eliminated using renewable energy or other mitigation methods by 2050 will be offset through carbon sequestration achieved as close by as possible with the priority of City, Lane County, State of Oregon, Pacific Northwest. Carbon sequestration steps should include planting trees in City and Lane County, shifting Oregon agriculture and forest policy to a sustainable methods that sequester carbon, shifting Pacific Northwest forest policy, sourcing carbon offsets on the U.S. national market. Thank you.
City councilors and mayor, your Eugene Sustainability Commission has voted unanimously Wednesday, September 18th to request city council approve the commission's resolution of support for the local youth-led climate strike, a resolution which you can find in your packets tonight. This is a specific action you can take tonight, as yourselves and your sustainability staff consider the specifics of our emergency climate declaration. If you support this emergency declaration and the youth-led climate strike, please stand up now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Amanda Dellinger, followed by Rowan.
Hello, my name's Amanda Dellinger, and I live in Eugene in Ward 8. I've been living with my spouse in an ADU for the past three years, and six years ago, I was completely disabled. Half of my body stopped working. I couldn't drive, work. I couldn't walk without a cane or even stand long enough to make food. I have a life of unpredictable disability, and I never thought I'd be able to provide for a family. Now that we live in a tiny house on our landlord's property, I'm able to provide and work full-time while my spouse stays home with our newborn, something that would have been impossible without this housing solution. ADUs offer options, not only for people like me with disabling conditions, but also for those who may otherwise be homeless, couch surfing, living in cars, or for young people with extreme debt, or seniors who receive very little income. I'm also the Community Relations Director at Square One Villages, and I come in contact with the endless amount of people desperate for housing every day. Too many don't have access in our community, and including ADUs and cottage clusters as options for more people would greatly increase what our city has to offer, while also helping keep people safe, healthy, and alive.
Thank you. Rowan, followed by Jan Spencer.
I'm Rowan, and I'm from the friendly neighborhood. Not sure what ward that is. My immune system is on the knife's edge. I've had some very close calls in the last couple of decades while living in Eugene, and that adds to do with not 5G, which I'm about to talk about, but industrial poisoning, lead, asbestos, also pharmaceutical that my doctor thought I could try, and it turned out to be toxic. So since then, I had a cancer scare in the late 90s. I was, I'm grateful to have gotten through that, but I have, I'm right on the knife's edge. And in the year 2000, I just moved to Eugene. I was walking up Skinner's Butte, and about 100 feet before I got to the top, my skin started to prickle. I turned, and I saw a broadcasting tower, which I don't think was 5G. I don't think they had it back then. But I've since not gone to Skinner's Butte, and I've avoided other sources of electromagnetic radiation. I avoided the cellphone for a long time. I'm finally working out my relationship with that. And now, the more I learn about 5G, I just, I almost can't believe this is happening, because if that really goes into play, from what I understand, if that becomes operational, I will have no place to go on the planet. So I do hope you will do whatever you can to put the brakes on it. I'm not dissing tech. I worked for IBM in the 80s in New York. I have a deep respect for tech, but I also have an appreciation of blind spots, my own and for sure in corporate America, including high-tech. Do I have any time? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jan Spencer, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
Hi, my name's Jan Spencer, and I live in the River Road neighborhood. I'm actually on the board of the River Road Community Organization, but I'm not representing ARCO, and I thank everybody for being here. This is what, hopefully, democracy looks like. I would like to invite the council and everybody here to a series of site tours this coming weekend. On this piece of paper that was handed out, it's actually September 27th. It's not October. It's this Friday. And the site tour is locations here in Eugene that are exceptional in that they have a variety of features, suburban properties, co-ops, that address many state and city and climate change planning goals, like to build community, conserve resources, local food and energy, increase residential density, reduce the use of cars, prepare for an uncertain future. These are all city and state planning goals, and what these site tours are going to do is show and tell what a preferred future looks like. There are already people in Eugene who are looking into the future, and they're already living in the future. And these sites, this free tour, are going to show and tell what people are doing with their own properties, kind of repair suburbia. We don't need to be making more suburbia. We need to densify. Those are planning goals. You all know that. So I invite the council, and I invite everybody here to the site tours, and I leave you with these very nice posters of suburban permaculture. And for the audience, there are more posters back here on this table. This is part of a blueprint for a preferred future. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll leave this here.
Tiffany Edwards, followed by Susan Bliven.
Mayor and council, Tiffany Edwards, Ward 5, with Eugene Chamber, and I'm here to talk to you about ADUs. The Chamber has weighed in in the months leading up to this deadline for compliance and many times since. It was then and is still about the recognition that people desperately need housing here in Eugene, not just the people who are already here, but those who are coming, young professionals, aging seniors, and everyone in between. We are alarmingly behind, and we need to employ every tool we have to build more housing. It's impacting our ability to attract employers, students, workers, jobs, all which deliver additional tax revenues to support our services. ADUs are privately funded, and their existence will not only bring more housing, but more property tax revenue, all at no cost to the city. ADUs won't solve the housing crisis, but they'll help us meet our other community goals around climate, density, and infill, and diversifying our housing types. In finally taking action on ADUs, the business community is behind you, the builders, the realtors, housing advocates, and land use watchdogs like Thousand Friends, AARP, WeCan, Better Housing Together. We are all organizations focused on improving our community and on policies that are in the interest of the larger community, and we are cheering you on to make this happen. It's not about any one of us as individuals. We care about the community, even if it means confronting fear of change. The term neighborhood livability belongs to all of us. This policy doesn't mandate ADUs. It simply would allow them to be built by someone who wants to build one, in their own backyard, again, at no cost to the city. If the issue is short-term rentals or the bad behavior of those who don't have the same attention to detail to their homes and respect for their neighbors, which isn't limited to renters, by the way, those are separate policies. Let's have those conversations. We are open to reasonable regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Bliven, followed by Seth Sadowski.
Excuse me, it takes a while to get positioned. My name is Susan Bliven, and I reside in Ward 5. I've been asked by AARP to speak to you again, although my opinions are my own. I spoke to you on May 20th about the need for ADUs, including my own potential need. Citizens like me rely on the council to protect us, especially when we can't protect ourselves. I am physically fragile and require assistance. If something were to happen to my husband, I would have to enter an assisted living or nursing facility. As I told you on May 20th, I'd rather die. If ADUs were permitted in Eugene, I would have another option, one that would allow me to access the care I need while retaining personal choices and dignity. I'd be able to build a small unit designed to allow me maximum independence, privacy, without being isolated or endangered by not having necessary supports. Natural supports in a person's community are preserved. People who have different disabilities can live near their families, lessening their needs for outside supports. More younger people could be housed. We all know that housing Eugene is tight and too expensive for many. I've known up to six unrelated people to rent a one-bedroom apartment together just to remain housed. Much has been made of the potential impact on infrastructure if ADUs are allowed. I believe that for all impact would be less than allowing concentrated construction.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seth Sadowski, followed by David Eigel.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Venice and councilors. I'm Seth Sadowski. I live in Ward 2. I come here over and over because I want to encourage Eugene to be a leader in fighting climate change. There are a lot of things that the city can't control, but the city does directly control, this council directly controls, our zoning code, our streets, and our public space. That's why I keep asking you to make better decisions about these things. Unfortunately, a majority of you don't care, and spent the last two Mondays showing the community that you don't care. It is abundantly clear that trying to keep our growth within the city instead of on the fringes and making our streets inviting for non-automobile users are the keys to leading on climate as a city. The 350 folks and the Children's Trust folks show up to say it with me all the time. This is the idea behind both the ADU legislation that you are choosing not to comply with and HB 2001, which you are pretending to fight rather than trying to figure out how to comply with. Luckily, the state legislature cares more about preserving our farms and forests, encouraging desegregation, providing housing, and fighting climate change than about worries that parking may someday in the future be difficult, or that one might have a few more neighbors than we currently do. Unfortunately, the majority of you don't care. I know that zoning decisions are hard, but if cities were succeeding in accommodating growth, then these bills would not have been written. These bills are not just about Eugene, but they're also not just about Portland. Neither bill is going to be overturned. The state is giving you an out by letting the recalcitrant majority of this council say, "We didn't have a choice. We're just following state law." Too bad, they underestimated how recalcitrant you are.
Thank you. David Eigel, followed by Arwen Mastasbane.
David Eigel, I have the honor and pleasure of being in Emily Semple's district. I come again to ask the city council to distance itself from the Dun Hall denaming scandal. Mr. Evans, who is not only not a duck, but a beaver, was prominently involved in the renaming of the former Dun Hall in the Guivo campus. His membership on the city council was frequently cited in the media in connection with the renaming. Mr. Schill lied in his presentation to the trustees. Mr. Schill was born and raised in New York and had little connection to the state of Oregon, apparently little knowledge of Oregon's history and traditions when he arrived to become president of the University of Oregon. Mr. Schill did, however, writ with his own regional racist and religious bigotry intact. Mr. Schill, by the standards of a modern university president, possesses minimal educational credentials. He holds only a bachelor's degree and a basic law degree. He lacks not only a PhD, but a master's degree. He is the product of uneducated parents who were financial failures. It appears to me that honor, decency, and integrity were not values stressed in the Schill household, and that Mr. Schill arrived in Eugene with a rather large chip on his shoulder. He seems to have convinced himself that he is the wise man of the East who came to enlighten the bumpkins of Oregon. I've sent you a copy of a letter I sent to Mr. Schill. He will be unable to support the statements he made to the trustees. Mr. Schill has not only attempted to link Professor Dunn and the people of Oregon with crimes they were not a part of, but with crimes that were never even committed. Mr. Evans, there is nothing wrong with being a beaver, but as a member of the city council, it's important that you not behave as a quack. I urge you to lead the way in this matter and to simply tell the truth, that the council didn't study the history related to the Dun Hall denaming, and that it took no position on this matter. Do it, Mr. Evans. Tell the truth. It's what Mr. Unthank would have wanted you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Arwen Mastasbane, followed by Terry Waldron.
My name is Arwen Mastasbane. I live in Ward 1. I'm the executive director of Carry It Forward, which is a small nonprofit that works specifically with homeless individuals in Eugene and Springfield. My comments tonight are prompted by Emily Semple's comments to the Human Rights Commission that were played earlier and your subsequent public apology on the register guard. But I'm really here to speak to all of you, actually, about getting clear about your guiding principles. As public servants, I think you have a higher responsibility to articulate your principles and to act on them with your words and actions. and to act on them with your words and actions. My dad raised me to believe that real integrity is being consistent between your words and your actions and your principles. Okay? So Carry It Forward operates on the principles that all people have something to offer and strength to contribute. And we offer opportunities to folks that are unhoused, and job opportunities. We try to remove barriers. We build community and connections, because these are some of the hardest things for people to get. Okay? So imagine my dismay in hearing our name, my organization's name, used in the same sentences that you spoke to publicly disparage the very people we're serving. I think we have to get away from thinking of homelessness as an individual issue. It is a systems issue. It's not a partisan issue, it's a humanity issue. You are all in a position to impact systems that perpetuate homelessness, but I don't know where your principles are. Emily, just changing the word from terrorism to something more palatable is not enough. You have to be consistent with what you say and do, or I can't say that you represent me. And that goes for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Waldron, followed by William O'Brien.
Good evening. I'm Teri Waldron. I live in the River Road area. I'm a recently retired high school art teacher. I am a witness. I taught advanced art in the International Baccalaureate Program in Portland, Oregon. It is an international program that draws students to be challenged in a multitude of areas. In that program, students dive deeply into research in chosen subjects. Students are expected to research other cultures from around the globe, as well as historical analysis. The program's aim is to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. In other words, to become global citizens. I am a witness. I have witnessed anxiety, stress, and depression in young people in the past few years, more than I've ever seen before. I have witnessed the use of imagery and metaphor to indicate climate destruction using watercolor on paper. I have witnessed mass burning through the harsh textures of oil pastel and wax to indicate temperature rise. I have witnessed chaotic compositions through mixed media that indicate complete destruction. I have witnessed dead oceans and lakes through gouache and oil color in earth tones of amber and ochre on canvas. What is going on here? I ask them. They told me, they told me individually, that they fear for their future due to climate change. What am I to say to them? Hope? Maintain hope?
Thank you.
Please make a decision this evening or in the next forum to support youth climate strike.
Thank you. William O'Brien, followed by Geronimo Garcia.
When I came here tonight, I was unaware that there's a motion for you to vote on an emergency climate resolution, and a lot of it's been put out by these young people. So I think we're in dire times. So if we're in dire times and this planet is dying, and the symptoms are war, homelessness, whatever, famine, you know, you have a problem. And we've had a very good rainfall the last few weeks. Before that, we were heading to the drought. So we're spared, you know, like Florida, Bahamas, Texas, they get it. They got walloped, you know? So we've been walloped before, too, you know? And so you have this young girl, all four feet tall of her, 16, very soft-spoken, but I heard her four-minute speech as part of it, and she walloped the people in very high places. And while she did that, she screamed at them. She says, "You're killing me, and you're going to kill my generations, and we're going to remember this," you know? So I hope you remember that a lot of people here are worried, and it needs to be done, you know, legally, through the courts, through the lawyer there. You gotta step up and stop it, because while this young lady's talking today, you've got the nut that's running this country supposedly. He's out of religious con-- he's at the same building as she was, Greta Thunberg. And he's talking, he's talking about America's respect for religion.
Thank you.
And you know what? What we do, what that kind of religion is, we put people in cages.
Thank you. Thank you. Geronimo Garcia, followed by Steve Deere.
Yeah, totally, there's a declaration of climate extreme danger. That'd be great. I have been under extreme stress. I would prefer to speak on behalf of the concerned groups and organizations of fellow people. We only have two minutes. Tonight, I wish to tell you of the support I need while I protest in a First Amendment free speech manner, the general homelessness situation, and the tragic manslaughter of Annette Montero just weeks ago. She will have another memorial at the White Church tomorrow. I have held her signs and maintained a memorial under the cameras of the Eugene police, from police harassment as well as residents of the street and sidewalk. Please, help me. I need your help. I wish that there could be reconciliation of the Eugene authorities and the homeless who are my neighbors and constituents. I am a homeless candidate for city council, and if I can acquire an official address, I would run. But can a homeless person run for office? Can you ask me that question? Because there are certainly many homeless candidates who are out there. And I really would like to talk about the 5G concerns and the climate change concerns and other concerns. But I'm out there under the city council, in the street, in the gutter. It's like Skid Row. It's like the sidewalk. And we are under the city council, and the police harass us very often, giving us many tickets. I have many tickets now, and I need representation. And I'm telling you that I'm doing a First Amendment free speech--
Thank you.
Protest.
Thank you. Steve Deere, followed by Martha Bryson.
Good evening. My name is Steve Deere. I live in Elmira. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Red Rebel Brigade and Extinction Rebellion Eugene. All here live in Eugene. The Red Rebel Brigade and Extinction Rebellion are international movements for creatively, nonviolently disrupting business as usual before climate catastrophe irrevocably disrupts all life on our planet. The red we wear symbolizes the blood of all species, blood which unifies us, blood of species going extinct every hour. Our species is rapidly headed towards extinction. As Greta Thunberg told the UN this morning, people are dying, entire ecosystems are collapsing. We are in the beginning of a mass extinction. This is the moment of our lives, of all life. This is a do-or-die moment for you, for all of us. Red Rebels channel the furies, the guardians, our ancestors, our future descendants. They call on us. They call on you. We call on you. Over the past two years, more than 1,000 local governments in 19 countries, including 39 U.S. cities, have declared a climate emergency and committed to action to drive down emissions at emergency speed. The city of Eugene is not one of them. No city in Oregon has done so. It is time to do the right thing or die. Set an example, set an example, set an example for Oregon and the world. We demand and expect the city of Eugene to start speaking the truth about climate change and the broader ecological crisis. As Greta Thunberg told the world today, the 2030, 2050 goals in this declaration will not keep us under the 1.5-degree threshold. Although this declaration is a big step forward for the city, and we support the essential organizing around it, as Extinction Rebellion, we demand and recognize that a far more aggressive timeline is needed to support our children and future generations. Our ancestors are warning us, before it is too late, act in truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, everyone, I ask you to respect the rule of the room, which is that you can signal your approval by waving your fingers. We keep it quiet. It's out of respect. And also, people only have two minutes to speak. If you interrupt them with applause, they don't get their two minutes. So for multiple reasons, please just show silent approval. Thank you. Martha Bryson. Martha Bryson?
She's up there.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm looking right past you. Followed by Beverly McDonald.
The city of Eugene, by failing to provide enough toilets for public use, is creating a public health hazard. This failure to provide enough public toilets creates a catastrophic hardship on our unhoused neighbors, who often do not have money, to make a purchase in a local store or shop, which is a prerequisite for the privilege of being allowed to use a bathroom in most businesses. I learned in the past few weeks that those who temporarily sheltered at the mission and at the community-supported shelter rest stops are required to leave and are locked out of those places for as long as six hours every day, rain or shine, and left to wander the streets with no access to toilets. I realize you don't control their funding, but you could write them a strong letter. Communities across the nation face the same situation with homelessness at crisis levels, but many are finding solutions. For instance, in Vanita, two portable toilets are provided, one in each of two locations for the homeless, and are cleaned twice a day. Many also have portable handwashing facilities, similar to the ones used in Springfield, at Island Park for the July 4th event, and at various other parks right here in Eugene for special events. The ability to clean one's hands is essential to improved hygiene necessary to maintain acceptable public health standards. Communities like Eugene, who do not adequately provide toilet and handwashing facilities, are substantially at risk of an increase in the spread of hepatitis A in typhoons, such as Los Angeles is currently battling. As reported by the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council, San Diego's hepatitis A outbreak sicked nearly 600 and killed 20 between March 2017 and January 2018. Most of those affected were people experiencing homelessness, according to the San Diego Health and Human Services Agency.
Thank you. Thank you. Beverly McDonald, followed by Luann Elms.
My name is Beverly McDonald. I'm a 45-year resident of Eugene. I support the council action tonight to endorse this week's youth climate strike. It sends a message to youth and the community that the city leaders care about the future and understand the emergency nature of the climate crisis. Even though I am considered beyond middle age and possibly set in my ways, I am willing to adjust my lifestyle and make changes that reduce my carbon footprint. Daily, I consider my trips. Can I consolidate them? I consider what I buy. I consider where it came from. It's something that goes through my mind all the time, and it's because of the climate We are fortunate to own our home, and in the past few years, we've changed from gas to duckless. Whether our influence is small or big, we, all of us, should, in the words of John Wesley, do all the good you can, in all the ways you can, to all the people you can, just as long as you can. As city council, your influence is big. Be leaders that understand the emergency nature of this climate crisis and endorse the climate strike. Thank you.
Thank you. Luann Elms, followed by John Del Nero.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first council meeting, and I think I hit a pretty colorful one. And I loved seeing democracy in action here. I'm completely changing the subject here. I live out in River Road, and I believe Saret is my counselor. This is in regards to the annexation, the Hatten annexation. And I live out in River Road on Anderson Lane, and I'm a part of a small city development. And I moved there in 2002, so it's been about 17 years. And as time goes on, I find out that I'm on a local access road, and I'd like the city to consider, in this annexation, that they consider the four houses that are within our development that are on this local access road. We pay city taxes but do not get the benefits of the other residents in our small development. Some of the maps that have come out, they seem to be changing from, you know, like going to city or county roads, but ours remains a local access road without any benefits of being in the city and paying city taxes. So I just like, I think Pat Farr might be helping out with this, but just wanted to ask that you reconsider these four houses in the small development that are not covered with the city benefits, but we do pay city taxes. So thank you for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. John Del Nero, followed by Christine Rush.
John Del Nero, Ms. Red is our councilperson. I am also talking about the annexation issue relative to Anderson Lane. We lived here since 2002, and we'd had parking problems for a long time on that street, abandoned vehicles, all kinds of cars and motorhomes and all sorts of things that are parked in county. The west side is county, the east side where we live. And the four houses on this street, there's over 25 or more homes that are actually in the development, and we all pay sewage and water fees and runoffs and all those. And in fact, we had a great deal of flooding involved in this neighborhood and as a fight or a struggle for about 10 years, until the city and the county and the federal government came out with to change the drainage system in particular so that we wouldn't flood every winter for extended periods of time. So what I would like to say is that may have established a trifle bit of precedence in the sense that the city has already committed money to the reconstruction of our street in front of our houses, and even had an experimental drainage system installed in that, which is working quite well. So I'd like to have that consideration made, that we would be absorbed not only in the street, but for the parking enforcement and the other things that are currently going on in our neighborhood, and also vehicles and the code enforcement, along with that, with vehicles that are being left on properties that are inoperable and in plain view and even blocking the sidewalks apart. So I would hope that we could reevaluate the map structure and include Anderson Lane in the city process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine Rush, followed by Artie Leider.
Hi, my name's Christine Rush, and I'm supporting Luann and John concerning the annexation. And I'm actually the spokesman for our association, and so I do a lot of communicating. There's been a lot of issues to try to get where we are today, to get this far. We've been working with Jeff Petrie and lately Dan Halverson, and we've also been working with Pat Farr. And Pat Farr just texted me-- And Pat Farr just texted me a minute ago and said he had to leave, but he had submitted a letter to you guys, and he's going to give me that letter in the morning. We've had quite a process trying to get this annexation thing for the roads taken care of. It's been real frustrating for the people in our neighborhood, not knowing who to call when we have an emergency or when we have an issue. We call the county, they say, "Call the city." The city says, "Call the county." So, I think that what we're asking is that finally, once and for all, that the council, you know, come off dead center and get this taken care of for our community, because we have major, major problems. And I, today, dropped off a packet at the councilor's office for you guys to review of a lot of different things that are going on in our neighborhood, that we have sent emails to you guys. I've sent emails to you, to the council, never once got an answer back from anybody except Pat Farr. And so, I'd like for you to review that, take a look at what we're asking, and let's move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Artie Leider, followed by Elijah Davis.
Hi, my name is Artie Leider, and I'm the owner of Mackenzie River Music on West 11th Avenue. As a Eugene business owner and resident, disturbed by the sidewalk camping and demonstrations taking place on West 11th Avenue near the municipal court. I'm not here to simply complain. I'm here to advocate for a sane and inclusive solution. A city business tax would be one possible starting point to make resources available to take the steps necessary to finding long-term solutions to this complicated problem. Doing nothing or kicking the can down the road literally, as the city council has, by allowing camping on concrete sidewalks, is not a solution. Housing and healthcare are a basic necessity for all of us, and we have an obligation to help those who are unable to provide that for themselves. However, we also have an obligation not to let those who are unwilling to even be part of that solution make life miserable for everybody else in the city. Downtown Corvallis is a lively place, by contrast, to downtown Eugene, which seems to me to be dying very slowly. The city has plenty of land available that could be used to provide temporary camping and make available rehab services to help those who are willing to help themselves. City of Eugene has worked really hard to help wealthy developers get wealthy. I know them. Many of them are my customers. I'd like to see that determination be focused instead on making our city a more level place for all of us. We need to make the distinction between being homeless and those who choose to be homeless and have no responsibility for themselves or the places and people they affect. I don't envy the city council the things they have to deal with. People seem to assume you have a magic wand. I don't, but I really feel we have to work harder to find some of these solutions.
Thank you. Elijah Davis, followed by Charles C. Kaler.
Hello. I am an unhoused person in this community and have been so since March of 2013. I started out as a human rights activist in the sleeps protest. I did have a serious issue with drugs, and I have over 100 tickets for seeking shelter or camping in parks. I am no longer addicted to drugs. I contribute to my community in positive ways that make a difference, and I volunteer full-time for a community radio station that gives back to our community by providing a platform for voices that need to be heard. And here's a voice that needs to be heard. Something that needs to be said is that a mental health issue for the unhoused gone unchecked is the responsibility of the community at large and in whole. Not doing anything, such as providing immediate shelter for those that need to take some rest, a bathroom for somebody that's differently gendered and therefore not included, how about a moment to catch their breath after a panic attack? These are things that I needed and was never able to receive. But because nobody's doing anything about it, everybody's participating in the problem. I'm no longer willing to do that. I have a show on Fridays at 6:00 p.m., and my voice will be heard, because those that care about me make sure it is. I do my best for myself, and I'll do my best for my friends and my family on the streets and standing beside me. I'm no longer willing to participate in the problem, but I am willing to participate in the solution. And some of that is standing on a corner with a sign that says, "I'm hungry," and so is my friend. Or standing right here, right now, to say that this community as a whole is doing something bad for our unhoused community that can't help themselves. Shame on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles C. Kaler, followed by Eliza Koschinsky.
Congratulations on the correct pronunciation of my name. I'm Charles C. Kaler, and I live on Pioneer Pike in Eugene. I speak in favor of the use of ADUs as required by Senate Bill 1051. After a study of the remand from Luba and the council's responses, I believe the city is on the wrong path. Rather than undermining the ideas with questionable responses, those resources should be used to make building ADUs more barrier-free. I'm a retired former building codes official of about 20 years, so I think I can, there are several ways to make the process more affordable and user-friendly. One is to work with builders and designers to create a handful of pre-approved standardized plans, thus reducing the time and cost of plans examination. Examine ways to streamline code services to reduce enforcement costs. There are those who assert ADUs will adversely affect the character of a neighborhood. Maybe. It's possible a homeowner who already lives there has a different design style, paints their house pink and purple, or a need for more living space and adds a second story or a storage building or parking, more parking, so they build a carport. All could alter the character of the neighborhood. There's no guarantee. It can happen now without building an ADU. In a city that prizes environmental conservation, it's baffling to think that density is such a pariah. Most of us wish to remedy the lack of affordable housing. There is no silver bullet for this, but there is a silver buckshot approach. We can employ many methods to solve the problem. The use of ADUs is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliza Koschinsky, followed by Chris McAllister.
Hello. I'm Eliza Koschinsky, and I live in Ward 1. I was deeply disappointed with your work session last week regarding accessory dwelling units. Once again, you chose to dodge making a decision in favor of yet more delay. ADUs are a small piece of the puzzle, but the one that needs to be addressed if you're going to be able to take real action on our housing and climate crises. It's time to stop stalling. You said you wanted to give the public more time to weigh in. You've been discussing these questions around ADUs for years. There have been a multitude of public hearings. You've received dozens of additional comments at public forums. You've received over 1,000 pages of written comment. In various letters and comments over the past two years, you've heard from dozens of groups requesting that you take action on ADUs, including the majority of the Housing Tools and Strategies Working Group, 1,000 Friends of Oregon, Homeowners Association, AAARP Oregon, Liv Move, the Democratic Party of Lang County, Chamber of Commerce, the American Institute of Architects, Southwest Oregon, Square One Villages, sponsors Nedco, now known as Dev Northwest, League of Women Voters, Shelter Care 350 Eugene, Board of Directors of the Rental Owners Association of Lang County, YIMBY Eugene Springfield, Bring Your Cycling, and We Can. You have heard from a multitude of individual residents, a number of whom have been prevented from providing homes for family members or caretakers because of the roadblocks in our code to ADUs that you put in place. The public has spoken on ADUs over and over. The majority has been clear that they want you to remove the Byzantine hopes that we make those who want to create ADUs jump through. But apparently, all of those people who come to tell you that don't count. Your desire to have another public hearing is not because you want to hear more from the public. It's because you're waiting for the public to say what you want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliza, oh, sorry. Chris McAllister, followed by Karin Knudsen.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Chris McAllister, and I'm a Springfielder. I come here as a citizen who is concerned about the homeless in your community. I have my own set of issues to face in Springfield, because our community doesn't recognize that we have homeless singles that need help. They tell them to come to you, because you happen to be the county seat and the one shelter that we call accessible is available. Words matter. People matter, and your people matter, and it should be apparent when we speak of them. Our people are not illnesses. Our people are not terrorists. Our people are not scum, yet we are treated like that. We are not given the dignity when we ask for help. When we say what is our barriers, we are turned down. We are told to wait for the study. When we get our studies, we find the information we have known for decades. 1989, Lang County did a study and a report on how to fix homelessness. Much of what you are considering in the tax report were present here in this community in 1989. The issues are not changing, neither are some of the fixes. The only thing that isn't happening is it's not happening fast enough. Your people deserve better. They deserve answers that reflect their needs. I just helped a 74-year-old woman who got discharged from two hospitals for being homeless. She is sicker now than she was when she was in the hospital, yet because we think that we have a support network, we assume it will work. Our system is broken. Our system has been calling for help, and yet we mask it with community concern. We don't act when the community has a response for these homeless people, yet we act when the housed have the same issues. Treat it like it's a fire. We need to put it out. The people need you, and they need to breathe, and your people will not breathe unless you start to listen and help them. They depend on you, because no one else is speaking for them. The governor's not going to step in. They need you. They need heroes, not names. Thank you.
Thank you. Karin Knudsen, followed by Diana Bilofsky.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Karin Knudsen from Ward 3, an architect and the project lead for Better Housing Together. And I won't need, I don't think, my whole three minutes tonight. I just want to share that so many people are frustrated by the wasteful approach that is being taken to complying with the state law around ADUs. It's wasteful and it's disorienting. We're wasting time. We're wasting resources. We're wasting patience. We're wasting energy that we could be putting towards addressing the real problems in this community and the real challenges that we have related to providing appropriate shelter and affordable housing for people in this community. So, I just want to encourage you to please use your positions as our elective representatives to complete this work, to come into compliance with the state law, and not allow yourselves to set the bar that low with regards to our housing policy, but instead to ask what else we could do as a community to see progress. What ways could we actually encourage the building of more of these small and efficient units of housing in our community? How could we help? How could we look to neighbors and people who clearly are burdened by the request to come again and again to this body, asking you to take simple action? How could we help them to accomplish the things that they need in order to thrive in this community? Counselor Yeh, I wanted to say that I've received probably a dozen emails this week celebrating your clarity around this issue of ADUs, your willingness to lead in the fiscal responsibility, the sustainability, the sociability, the simple, again, compliance with the state law, and asking also for others to speak up if we're interested in those things. I know many, I think, other members of this body feel strongly about those same issues, and we want you to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Bilofsky, followed by Brennan Matherly.
I am Diana Bilofsky. I live in the Amazon. Earlier, you had a discussion about short-term rentals, and the main thing I heard was you didn't know how to make people compliant with it. I have two suggestions. One, make sure that you disallow the conversion of whole houses with no carve-outs for, you know, 90 days, because that's where you get into trouble. I've done a lot of research on STRs in all sorts of cities, and that's where you have the low compliance, is where you make a carve-out. Second thing is, a really easy thing, is to require all property owners to declare the use of their property in conjunction with paying their yearly property tax. Very simple. Once a year, piece of paper, make a mark. I have given to you some paper that explains how to do this. So, you know, if you don't have it, I'll be glad to get it for you. And then the second thing I wanted to say is that, you know, until we create the housing in this city that is needed by 3/4 of the people who can't afford housing, we should build nothing but deed-restricted affordable housing. This plan along the river, 500 units, and only 75 are affordable, and I don't even know at what level affordability. You should make all of those affordable, just because of the emergency we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brennan Matherly, followed by Cynthia Matherly.
Hello. My name is Brennan Matherly, and I live in Eugene. Polystyrene, or as it's called styrofoam, is toxic. The food and drinks in styrofoam containers are therefore filled with toxic substances. Styrene is a narrow toxin that accumulates in fatty tissue and has a whole smorgasbord of adverse health effects, such as headaches, fatigue, and irritation of the ears and eyes. And this isn't just bad for those of us eating things out of it. Tens of thousands of workers are exposed to styrene, causing them weakness, impaired hearing, and depression, as well as effects on kidney function. One study reported excess numbers of deaths associated with lung cancer and ovarian cancer as well. Styrofoam lasts almost forever. It takes about 500 years to decompose in the environment, giving animals plenty of chance to eat it and die from eating it. Along with it lasting forever, it also contributes to air pollution and climate change. When polystyrene is burned, it releases toxic carbon monoxide into the air, and when manufacturing it, releases a gas known as hydrocarbons, which in the presence of sunlight form a substance known to be associated with wheezing, shortness of breath, nausea, and asthma. Polystyrene is a hazard from start to finish, in more ways than one. From animals eating it, to us ingesting it from one way or another, it simply makes sense to get rid of it. This is one of the steps on the long road of reducing our carbon emissions. Reusables are an extremely viable option, instead of causing us damage to our environment and us too. I asked you commissioners today to make an add-on policy change banning polystyrene. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Matherly, followed by Bill Randall.
I have a case study handout for waste reduction. Thank you for your work. Oh, Cindy Matherly, Eugene resident. I'd like to thank you today for your continued work and your commitments to draft and to implement a climate action plan. Living in a disposable society, as we do, has made sustainability and eco-responsibility way more complicated than in my grandma's era. For instance, bioplastics, which is something relatively new, is a real problem today, unless most are taken to a high-temperature recycling facility. They decompose or break up like regular plastic, and a lot of people are really under the assumption that bioplastics are a good thing. There's toxic styrofoam, as my son mentioned, which is one of the worst plastics from creation to disposal. So, switching to reusables and durables is the most preferred way to go. And to having recycled content or bioplast, rather than recycled content or bioplastics, single-use items are the next best to a recycled content item. Many businesses in Springfield and Eugene are seeing advantage in making sustainability changes in their day-to-day operations, and that's what that paperwork shows you, a good case in point of businesses switching to reusables and the savings that they actually do see fairly quickly. I was in Full City Coffee Roasters the other day, and I saw a sign that said a 20-cent credit for bringing in your own container, which was really encouraging. And in-house, they use durables, utensils, plates, cups. And I ask you, by requiring food vendors to use only recycled content, napkins, cup Thank you. Well, the county can eliminate significant amounts of waste from entering the waste cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, sneeze. Bill Randall, followed by Pamela Kraus.
I'm Bill Randall, architect and senior principal at Arbor South Architecture at 380 Lincoln Street. I live at 1491 Lawrence Street in a home with a legal ADU on our lot, and we're in Ward 1 in the Jefferson Westside neighborhood. I urge council's support of ADUs, and I want to add a couple of comments. First, I want to urge you to be careful as you change the code that you do comply with and not try to undo state law. House Bill 2000 House Bill 2001 has specifically made that clear regarding the owner occupancy aspect of ADUs, that the city tried to simply kick the can down the road in the last round of code updates, instead of addressing this the first time around. I know the recommendation is now to eliminate the owner occupancy requirement, and I support that, as I have from the original Senate Bill 1051. Additionally, regarding flaglot setbacks, they should simply be the same as they are for their parent zone. As a home designer, the extra flaglot setback distances added to the code often push designs into building up with additional stories, increasing the chance of your neighbor looking down into your backyard, which is one of the concerns that people have with flaglots. That unintended consequence will continue to give flaglots a negative image until we fix that. With this round of code updates, we have that opportunity, and I encourage you to correct that. In sum, do what you can to encourage housing options beyond one single-family detached home on one lot. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Pamela Kraus, followed by Wayne Martin.
And yes, words. My name is Pamela Kraus. I live in Springfield, and words create this problem. We are a mass of dysfunction in my heart right now. So much sadness. A tragic death in a parking lot, several other deaths of unsheltered persons. A 74-year-old, very sick woman, unsheltered, camping, ticketed, and warned, threatened with arrest. I went with her to seek medical care. The horrible way she was treated in our medical system, blaming, using past failures as reasons for not doing more. And by the way, when I mentioned respite at every level of her care over the weekend, I was asked, can't she come home to live with you? Can you guess what I will say next time that is said to me? Seeing this in our medical system just was horrifying to me, and it's not different from other systems. I see it sustaining, and it's creating harm and a necessary death. Passing, pointing, and waiting are not doing anything to correct the severe ills we have right here in our community. I see not much hope right now, because there is such a steady nothing going on, and then damaging things happen, and it gets worse. Just reminding about the promise last October about sheltering and resourcing in a safe place, but now has a no camping allowed on the fence of a justice-for-all parking lot. That broken promise hurt this whole community.
Thank you. Wayne Martin, followed by Carmel Snyder.
I'm Wayne Martin. I live in Ward 1. I'm also mindful that you've been here for 90 minutes, and probably a bunch of stuff before that, and I can definitely understand the fatigue factor. If I say anything that's helpful, given your condition, if you'd just jot a note so that it's likely that you would forget, so that you not, I'd appreciate it. Everybody would. I wanted to give some pointers, which I've been giving for the last six months, eight I'd like to see you have a more, a role of oversight over the TAC report, over what your city staff and others are doing for the city's end of the TAC report. Back a long time ago, I suggested you do a national search, and that you target that search by finding people who have done exactly what you need to hire in other cities. That's very little research, and you can get those names. Now that you have a professional hiring consultant, I would appreciate if one of you or more of you would say to those consultants, please do the research, find us some names of people who have done this in Houston, and in Atlanta, and in San Diego, and in Salt Lake, and other places. That's suggestion one. Would you also have, cultivate a relationship with unhoused people on a regular basis, and invite them into your conversations by being proactive to do so? I've been meeting with a group of housed and unhoused people now for three months, and I guarantee you, they would like to have a greater role. I will thank you now.
Thank you. Carmel Snyder, followed by Majeska Seescreen.
Dear Mayor and councilors, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. My name is Carmel Snyder. I live in Ward 8. AARP is Nationwide Organization of More Than 38 Million Members, almost 50,000 which live here in Eugene. AARP supports zoning to allow accessory dwelling units, as outlined in Senate Bill 1051 and House Bill 2001. ADUs provide housing options for older adults and their families of all ages. The accessory dwelling unit is an affordable choice that can expand housing options for people of all ages. As a small footprint housing type, is it an efficient, creative, and cost-effective option in the affordable housing toolkit, and can be used to rapidly increase the housing supply? The benefits of ADUs vary from creating housing for caregivers or adding a rental unit for income generation. We urge you to move forward in creating the options residents in your community need. Now, I'm going to take off my AARP hat for a moment, and I'm here to speak to you as a constituent and as resident. I almost didn't come today because I was, I've been ill, and as I was leaving my doctor's office today, I witnessed a mother and her two young children sitting on the sidewalk. The older appeared to be in kindergarten or first grade, and the mom was helping her do her homework. I watched as the mom took off her apron from work and put it in her bag, and then I watched as this mom loaded up all their supplies in a shopping cart and walked around the building to a tent. I'm going to think about them when I go to sleep tonight, and I hope you do, too.
Thank you. Majeska Seescreen, followed by Darmika Henshaw.
Hi, Majeska Seescreen. I'll be pretty brief. I appreciate so much that so many people have said tonight, and really appreciate that we have these public forums where we can come forth and speak like this. Especially want to say I agree with all the folks talking about the climate emergency, but especially about the need for housing and the homelessness issues. Really want to support what Todd Boyle is saying about the need for really inexpensive, cheap housing for very low-income people, and the particular suggestions that he's making about that, about ADUs. I want to join with so many others in saying, come on, it's time to move faster on this kind of stuff. Obviously, there's a real emergency, and we need you to act like there is an emergency. Speaking of which, I'm one of the people with several organizations who's been asking for the city council, as well as the county commissioners, to declare, make some sort of declaration about the emergency on housing and homelessness. I appreciate that the Board of Commissioners have done that. Hope it doesn't turn out just to be symbolic. I don't think it needs to be just symbolic, but we really need you folks to do that as well. And don't wait for some long process through the Human Rights Commission to really start thinking in your hearts about the need for that to happen as soon as possible, and for it not to be just symbolic. And lastly, I want to say something about what Counselor Semple said in the Human Rights Commission, and I appreciate your apologies, and I guess that discussion will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Darmika Henshaw, followed by Lex Warden.
Hi. I'm Darmika Henshaw. I'm in Ward 7. Thank you for your ears and your patience. I'm speaking in support of the youth-led climate strike and the climate emergency A glacier in Iceland was officially declared dead in 2014, when it was no longer thick enough to move. What once was a glacier has been reduced to a small patch of ice atop a volcano. A funeral was held just last month for the loss of the Akk Glacier. The mourners went up to where the glacier used to be and placed a plaque there. At the bottom of the plaque, it has the name of the person who wrote this. It says Andre Snee Magnusson. It says August 2019. And it says 415 parts per million. And it's called "A Letter to the Future." So just for a moment, let's imagine here we are 50 or 100 years from now somehow, and we're in Iceland reading this. And it says, "Akk is the first Icelandic glacier to lose its status as a glacier. In the next 200 years, all our main glaciers are expected to follow the same path. This monument is to acknowledge that we know what is happening and what needs to be done. Only you know if we did it."
Thank you. And our final speaker is Lex Warden.
Hello, councilmembers and community members, and thank you so much for sticking it out. I know this has been a really long evening, so thank you for your patience. This is my first time doing this, so I'm a little nervous, but wrote out some stuff. I'd like to take a moment to honor the Kalapuia tribe, whose land we are on, and whose land we have kind of gotten into a really bad spot. I also want to talk to us and everyone about the interconnectedness of all of these problems, all of these situations, everything that we're facing right now. The AUD, the 5G, the climate crisis, all of these are connected. And if the land continues to get sick, everyone, no matter their age, no matter where they're from, no matter their socioeconomic status, we all get sick with it, and that is already happening with communities and species, both human and more-than-human, losing their lives. In order to combat this fear, it's so easy to move and be in a place of fear when we hear about the world and our species literally dying. And if we live in a place of fear, then we act out of a place of fear. And when we act in a place of fear, we end up harming so much more than ourselves and the people around us. I just wanted to take a vow in front of a lot of people. I have committed to not having children because of the extreme fear that I have, not only for my future. I will be roughly in my 30s by the time the climate cutoff is happening. And yeah, I just wanted to say that we can be a beacon of hope. We can be a beacon of hope. Eugene is ready. People are ready. The youth is ready, and we're so ready to support you in your decisions. You know? It's difficult, and we're all here to do it together.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for that final comment. Thank you for that final comment. Okay. Yes. So, thank you all for commenting. I have lots of councilors wishing to comment. I have Betty. I have Claire. I have Emily. Anybody else? I have, oh, I have Alan. I have Greg. Okay. All right, Betty.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who spoke, and especially the last person had a great point. She didn't get to finish, but overpopulation is a part of all the problems. But the people, the climate, people who spoke about the climate are speaking about the very survival of humanity, and that is extremely important. Housing is extremely important, too, but people, I don't know why people don't know generally that ADUs are permitted. They are not prohibited. And if you, that stands for accessory dwelling unit. If you're talking about getting rid of the residency requirement, then it's no longer accessory. But the buildings, if you need an accessory building, they are permitted. Thank you.
Counselor Syrah.
Thank you. So I think the folks who asked about Hatton Lane may have left, but I was going to ask that we pull that item from the consent calendar when we get to that part. I'm just kind of forecasting that, just to ask a couple of questions of staff related to what we were asked about there. I wanted to respond to Wayne Martin about inclusion of unhoused folks in conversations that the city's having. Right now, city staff is engaged in ongoing discussions with folks who are unhoused in our community, and engaging in a dialogue with them, with the intention of asking some of them to participate in a formal way in helping inform the projects and initiatives that we are working on to provide more services. So I wanted to, that's not widely known. It's, you know, some of the work that's going on in the background, but we are, you know, city staff is being very deliberate about engaging folks who will be the end-users of some of the things that we are going to be initiating. And I also believe that the city of Eugene did make a declaration about homelessness being an emergency. I think that might have been under Mayor Piercy, I'm hearing, 2015, so, or 2016, but that was done. So, you know, obviously, work is slower than we would want it to be, but we did make that statement. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke to us. At the Human Rights Commission meeting last Tuesday evening, I used the word terrorism. If I had pre-written my remarks, I would have chosen a different word. I apologize. In addition, I regret mentioning the organization Carry It Forward. I also mixed up the Easy A Market, which has an unrented apartment above it, and Albee's, who sells gyros. I'm sorry. Thank you to the Sustainability Commission for their resolution supporting the youth-led climate strike. It was an amazing outpouring of energy and hope, and I'm so grateful. The resolution was approved Thursday, Wednesday night. Packages came out Thursday. Resolutions can't really just go from what we get to what we approve. They have to be written in Eugeneese. So I'm sorry that we're not going to get to vote on it tonight, but I will be getting it out to council, and I am hoping that we can discuss and vote on it after our next public forum, which is on, when is it? October 7th, I guess?
14.
9th on Wednesday?
No, no.
No. I'm sorry. 7th, which isn't on our calendar.
It's not the 7th.
We haven't met yet. So it would have to be the 14th. I obviously had a long day. So you can come and speak in support of that again, although I'm certainly in support of it right now. And also, we will be having a public hearing, everyone's favorite, on November 18th, to hear about the ordinance on polystyrene. That would be to ban it. And also, an ordinance on plastic bags. Potential action on that would occur a week later, on November 25th. Once again, thank you to everyone. I do appreciate you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was going to comment on two things. One was that we did declare a housing emergency about two years ago, and asked the governor to actually... to actually, excuse me.
You can sit down. Thank you.
You can wait till after the meeting to do that. We did ask the governor to actually declare a housing emergency to do that. And then, secondly, I was at the climate strike on Friday with a couple thousand of my friends, and it was actually very heartening to see all the students march from Churchill and also from South Eugene in support. I noticed that the Portland School District encouraged, I think, Eric, students to actually participate, and Eugene 4J didn't. I wish they had made a different decision, but they still had an amazing turnout of kids from South Eugene and Churchill. So my power, power to those folks that did that. It was a great, great event, well-attended by many people.
Counselor Evans.
I think I'm good, Mayor.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I want to keep stressing this point because we hear it so frequently. From those who talk about ADUs, I sense that we probably will comply with state law. I sense that there may be even enough votes to remove the current restrictions, or I suppose I shouldn't use the word restrictions, whatever you want to call them. I sense that that's probably going to be the case at some point. And so when all of that has occurred and no more ADUs are constructed then than are now, I wonder if we'll be willing to finally admit that it's more about affordability than it is the law. We hear this all the time, that it is an affordable solution, and it's not. The reason they don't get built by the people who build them is because they don't pencil out. So I, again, we'll change the law. We'll probably change that. But when we don't see the applications for them, and we don't see people able to borrow the 100 grand they need to build each one, then maybe we'll have an honest conversation about how to deal with the housing crisis that we have instead of making this a be-all and end-all solution that it's not.
Any other councilors wishing to speak?
I just, I want to thank everyone who came, and I recognize that we have an outpouring of recurring issues because we haven't resolved those issues. And so we get a full house repeatedly on some issues that come back again and again. And I think homelessness, we can never move fast enough and make big enough decisions, but it is a priority, and I think council has recognized that as a crisis for years, and it is why it has been at the top of council's work, why we have gone past the path we have followed. Climate, I think there's going to be a lot of action in this council in the coming two months on the CAP 2.0 and a lot of decisions. So I think in addition to a resolution that you will see some tangible progress. And I fully expect on ADUs that we will make the progress and that we will comply with 1051 because that is state law, and we need to get there. And similarly, think that will be with respect to House Bill 2001. So we'll get there. Thank you all for advocating for that. And with that, we, that's the end of the forum period. We're ready for the consent calendar. There's a request to pull.
I can wait till it's, okay.
All right. Yes.
I wanted to get in on the conversation.
Okay. All right. So. Consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Except, oh, sorry. Except for which item was it?
B, 2B.
B.
Oh, item B.
Item B.
Except for item B.
Second. Okay. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8? Excellent. Okay. Item B on the consent calendar. Claire Sarret.
So we've got Jeff Petrie here, who's been working on this. We postponed taking action on this at the last consent calendar, when it was on the consent calendar before, in part to see if there was more public comment. We got additional public comment from folks in favor of the proposed annexations, but then tonight I heard people asking to be added to the annexation, and I would assume that we would like to pass what we've got in front of us and perhaps continue with the process that it sounded like you may have started with some residents to do the further annexation, but not wait. So if you could address your knowledge on that, thank you.
We, as staff and the community, would like to move forward with this annexation. After all the community input and output we've had and door-to-door and community meetings, and you're correct, there is a local access road that has city property abutting it. That is a different, it's an annexation, but it's a different process. So the current proposal we put in front of you, the county still maintains ownership of the road, and we put a layer on top of it. The local access road, I believe the city buys the road, and so that's kind of, that's a different process. Who knows the annexation process?
So I heard folks advocating for that to happen, and you are engaged with those folks and looking at how to move that process forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, so Public Works is the lead on that project, and they're working with the county about how does that local access road transition to the city, and what does that look like? So they're having those conversations in part because of this, but in part because of other questions that are out there in the community.
Great. And then one of the speakers said that she had sent us emails about the problems out there. I'll be honest, I do not recall receiving those emails. When I get emails from folks in Ward 7 who identify themselves as such, I definitely respond, so I apologize if she sent us emails that I did not respond to about these particular issues. But thanks for clarifying that. So I think I would hope that council will support the current annexation before us, knowing that there is a process to address the folks who brought us additional requests this evening.
Okay. Ready to vote? Oh, sorry. Yes, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. Am I correct in assuming that with Anders, Anderson Lane? Anderson Way? Whatever. Sorry, I couldn't remember the name of it there. Am I correct in assuming that Public Works will have to create an LID and charge those folks commensurately for bringing that up to a city standard before it's annexed? Or something close to it?
Yeah, it'd have to be something close to that, because yes, it's like buying a road is what we're doing.
Yeah, we'll pay for some of that, but we will also be charging those folks pretty significantly for that process.
That's in the discussions.
After an LID is created in order to bring it up to standard?
What would have to happen, yes, if it happens.
This is at least tangentially a part of a previous work session that I've brought up, where our actions will create impacts. I mean, we've already agreed, in this particular case, in this area, unless I'm mistaken, those homes were probably built while that was a local access, while it was a county road, all of those things. But when we're permitting homes to be built where the roads are less standard and we don't have a plan for bringing them up to city standards, then we end up, when we are going to bring in and annex that street, they're creating more of a problem on these folks, and I think the rest of the community bears a burden or a higher burden since we've already permitted those homes to be there in the process of bringing that up to standard as opposed to charging them a huge chunk of money to do it.
We had a work session on this a while back. I don't recall where that work session ended, and so I'd have to go back and take a look at that, and we'd be happy to send something out to you and the rest of the council on sort of where that conversation ended in that work session.
I'm going to vote in favor of this because an awful lot of people have worked on it in order to solve a problem that's substantial. But we are shifting that problem to other people and then telling them the fix is going to cost them a huge chunk of money. And that, I have a little bit of a problem with that. I hope we're going to be willing to step up to the plate for a little bit of that since our actions will contribute to that.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of item B on the calendar? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8? None opposed? So that passes. Thank you very much, and that is our last. I, nope, do we have something else?
John Varofsky is whispering that we didn't make a motion on the.
Oh, we didn't make a motion on that? Oh, sorry.
Okay.
She moved minus 2B.
She moved minus 2B. We never put it on. Sorry.
Move to approve 2B. Move to approve 2B. Second.
Okay. Now, thank you.
We're going to have to put him on the payroll.
I know, really. Thanks, John. All right. Now we get to vote again. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8? Thank you very much.
Is this a vote of making John at the table or a momentaryian?
Okay. Thank you.
That's why you have to move the whole list and then pull one.
Then pull one, right. Okay. All right, George.
Unhonest.